Happy day to you, Hamzoo. Thank you for your participation in today's virtual public hearing. This virtual public hearing is convened by the Committee on Heritage and the Arts, Parks, Guam Products, Agony Revitalization, Self-Determination, and Regional Affairs. For the record, in accordance with the open government law, public hearing notices were given to all senators, stakeholders, and all main media broadcasting outlets, with the first notice being issued on Monday, November 23rd, 2020, and the second notice on Sunday, November 29th, 2020. The public notice for today's briefing was also posted on the legislature's website at www.guamlegislature.org. The time is now 6:37 PM. The virtual public hearing is now called to order. Joining me for this virtual public hearing is the minority leader, Senator Telo Tadegui. Sorry, I'm stumbling over that. Senator Telo Tadegui, so thank you very much for taking time in your busy evening to listen to these two bills. So also joining us is the Director of Department of Parks and Recreation, Director Roki Alcantara, and the Deputy Director Victor Villagomez. And I thank both of them for coming here tonight as well. I know that their responsibilities with the park keep them very busy, as do their other commitments. So before we begin the discussions on the agenda, which was made available at the virtual link posted within the committee's communication provided to confirmed hearing participants, I'd like to first provide some general rules of conduct. The conduct of this virtual public hearing shall be as follows. All participants must abide by rules of conduct and quality assurance standards, including broadcasting from a quiet room with little to no interruptions. The use of virtual backgrounds is not permitted. Broadcasting from a room with adequate lighting, specifically to ensure that a participant's face is not backlit, but visible at all times when speaking. Please ensure that you are unmuted and that you are speaking clearly into your microphone. The Chair will recognize individuals who have been confirmed as participants. Individuals providing oral testimony shall first be recognized by the Chair before speaking and shall state their name and title for record-keeping purposes. The order of questioning will begin with the panel of senators, which is a cozy number of two at this point. And each panel member will be allowed to pose one question and then be provided another round to ask any further necessary questions. Oral testimonies received shall not be confined to the... Excuse me, shall be confined to the substance... Okay, let me start that over. Oral testimonies received shall be confined to the substance of the subject at hand. Motives of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this rule of conduct will result in removal for the virtual meeting room by the host. I ask that all participants keep their comments or testimony to within five minutes. So we almost had a completely other kind of public hearing where we weren't getting to the subject at hand at all. So items for discussion at this public hearing are: First, Bill 426-35COR, introduced by myself, Kelly Marshall Titanel. It is an act to amend subsection 3115 of chapter 3, title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to clarifying the appointment process of the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation. Number two, we will then move on to Bill Number 295-35COR, also introduced by myself. It is an act to amend subsection 77114 of chapter 77, title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to safeguarding the Public Recreation Services Fund. I will begin by introducing the first bill and then will call on participants to testify, should they desire to do so. Opening statement is that, over the past several years, there has been much confusion over the confirmation process of the Director of the Department of Parks and Recreation. Part of this was, as was mentioned earlier, that there had not been a board in place for, I believe, six years. And this caused a gap in the process. Now that we have a bill, excuse me, a board in place, we are coming across two conflicting pieces of legislation that have created these extra layers. The legislative intent of the bill expounds on... Excuse me, expounds on two sections in law that reference the process. One part of the process requires that the Director needs consent of both the Governor and the legislature. We recognize that this is a peculiar step and no other agency requires both the consent of the Governor and the legislature. The bill, as introduced before us today, removes both parties. However, for the record, please note that the committee intends to amend the bill to better reflect the process as a whole and recognize the Governor's organic act authority to appoint heads of agencies and the legislature's responsibility to consent. The amended bill will amend the law to state that the Governor will appoint the Director upon the recommendation of the Board with consent of the legislature, which is the standard process. We will now accept testimony from those who are here today. I will call first upon the Director if he would like to provide any testimony before I move on to opening it up for questions. Director Alcantara, did you want to provide any testimony tonight?
Good evening, Senator Kelly Marshall, Senator Kelly Titanel. I mean, Tadegui. The bill that you introduced... I actually don't have anything to say about the bill. I mean, it's by law, and so I'm glad this is being rectified. Thank you.
Yes, and really, it becomes a four-step process with the two different pieces of legislation. So the Governor nominates and then the Board appoints or approves, and then it moves on to the legislature, but then it also calls for the Governor's consent back again. And as we mentioned, there's no other agency that we're aware of that has this additional fourth step. So we just want to bring it in line with other processes. But I will open it up to the Minority Leader if she has any comments or questions for the Director.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really don't have any questions. I mean, it's pretty much straightforward what you said earlier, you know, trying to keep the Board engaged. But you mentioned that there was an amendment to Bill 426-35. You have an amended version?
Yes, we will be amending it to make sure that it has all three processes, that there still is the legislative process. We think that's really important, given the large mandate of the Department of Parks and Recreation and, you know, the many issues that we know it has before us. And we're very grateful that the Director and the Deputy Director are working as hard as they are to fix those issues, but it just speaks to the need to, in my view, to keep the legislature as part of this process. But maybe you have some comments on the need to keep the legislature or not?
I think it's important. You know, we passed a bill earlier today that I felt that the legislature still needs to be part of the process. And that was the one with the University of Guam was passed. And I thought it was important, especially when you're dealing financially with the agencies. As you know, the legislature is holding the purse strings and it's important that we balance budget. But I think in this circumstance, it's just cut and dry. You know, we don't want to do anything that's inorganic, you know, taking away from the Governor's powers, as well as keeping intact the powers of the legislature. But I do have a question. What qualifications, if any, are required for a person to serve the Department of Parks and Rec? Is there anything, Mr. Alcantara?
Not that I know of, Senator. The appointment by the Governor is what the Commission members are voting for, you know, confirmation. But as far as requirements to be a Director of Parks and Rec, there's none.
Well, I know you're definitely qualified for the job, as today reflected your unanimous support for your directorship at Parks and Rec. So thank you so much for the continued hard work. And that's all I have for now. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yeah, and you know, I really appreciate that comment because it is such a large mandate and it really requires a lot of experience and skill. We're very fortunate. You were there when we went over, when we had the public hearing for the Director and we had his confirmation hearing. You know, he's well-versed in writing grants and in managing contracts and so many things. And so this might be something that we think about, maybe calling upon the Board or another part of the government to see if, you know, it'd be advisable to have some qualifications in there, at least to guide the process. Because I think this is something I've talked about quite a lot with people. People maybe think of the parks as mowing the lawn and, you know, refilling the toilet paper. But as I'm sure Director Alcantara can attest, the department really is so many things and requires so many skills, which is why I'm really hoping to get the park administrator back in and maybe look at the idea of getting a groundskeeper back in or a grounds administrator or a cemetery administrator, something like that, to really provide the appropriate level of support that Director Alcantara needs to manage these many things. So I do think looking at qualifications would be important to help people understand the breadth of skills and experience that can really make a difference in making the department successful. Did you have any thoughts on that, Director, that you could see that that could be important to kind of put into place for the future, certain skills or qualifications?
I think that's a good gesture. You know, qualification is one of the key for, you know, for getting employment. And so, you know, being educated and I guess experienced as far as handling of, you know, contractual issues, which the park has a lot, you know, that would be a plus for, you know, for the future candidate of Parks and Rec. Other than that, you know, it's just a matter of a lot of experience in handling certain issues, including manpower, manpower issues, and of course, you know, handling of employees. What do you do? You know, you need to have all those managerial background as far as, you know, being involved in this department. I think that's a good idea.
Yes, so I appreciate your feedback. I think more than anybody else in this room. You know, you're well-qualified to give us some feedback on that. And I really appreciate the minority for bringing that up because in one way or another, I've thought about this, but maybe hadn't thought about it right here and now. But, you know, we can continue to think out whether this would be something that we would call on the Board to do or what the best way to go forward with that is. And as you mentioned, Director, that managing contracts is a large part of what you do. And maybe that's some of how DPR has shifted over the years. And so that is something that we all know that we had an issue with earlier on with managing the pool contracts and service contracts. And so that needs to be a real strong part of the skill set. So I appreciate everybody for having that discussion. Is there anything else, Minority Leader, you want to mention before we go ahead and close this bill and move on to the next one? Okay, you're good. Okay, so with Bill 426, we have an opportunity to clarify an official process set in law. This opportunity is important in providing future legislatures and administrations a clear pathway for the DPR Director's confirmation process. To take each opportunity such as this to address any ambiguities or vacant law or conflicts, so that our successors don't have to go back and forth on the same issues we have faced. In fact, we got legal opinions at least three different times just to make sure that, you know, everything was appropriate as we were going forward. Avoiding this saves much time and effort and at the end of the day, makes for a more efficient process. And I ask my colleagues for their support and consideration of Bill 426. We will now move on to the second item. So it is 6:53, and we will move on to the second item on the agenda. This is Bill 295, which is an act to amend subsection 77114 of chapter 77, title 21, Guam Code Annotated, relative to safeguarding the Public Recreation Services Fund. As the bill sponsor, I will begin with my opening statement on the bill. Bill 295 was introduced after a meeting with the Department of Parks and Recreation, after some concern was shared by the department regarding further ensuring that the Public Recreation Services Fund was safeguarded from transfers. By law, the money deposited into the fund comes from fines. It can come from various fees, fines for perhaps violating our alcohol zones in our parks, and fees received from permit use for the parks and other such revenues that come the Department of Parks and Recreation's way. Expenditures of the fund are permitted only for the following purposes, and I think that this is important, that it's been streamlined in a way that helps the park do the work that it's mandated to do. It can use the fund for maintenance of the parks and recreational facilities that are under the department. It can support the purchase of supplies and equipment for maintenance. It can support the creation or continuance of community-related programs and activities for the island. We do have a recreation director now, or, excuse me, administrator now. And so this is something that he may be interested in bringing up to both the Director and the Board. So Bill 295 attempts to further ensure that every penny deposited into this fund brings in this fund. DPR has been consistently underfunded over the past couple of decades. Critical positions have gone vacant and necessary equipment are still lacking. This is no fault of the department, as it is per se, as it can only do with what it has been given. We have seen in the past that money in other funds or accounts are separate from the general fund, were transferred by other administrations. We would like to have the peace of mind that the legislature has made it abundantly clear that monies must stay with DPR and must be used only for the purposes set out in law. So with that, I will again ask the Director if he has any comments or testimony he would provide. I would imagine it will be in support of keeping the money for the department. Director?
Yes, thank you, Senator. Yeah, this bill will actually help the funding that the department has been lacking. I do support this with, you know, with the intent that it's going to be used for the, you know, maintaining the parks and getting materials and supplies, and especially equipment. You know, we need equipment here. So I do support this. And of course, with all the fees that we've been getting here in the department, like, for instance, the burial fee, which is $500 every burial, and we average around 10, 10 burials a week. And that's roughly around, what, $5,000? So, you know, and also the rental of the pavilions, which, you know, is about $15 for each of the pavilions down at Ipau and Mataupang, and also over at Inarahan. Those funds, you know, are really... I mean, we really need those funds to remain with us. That way, we don't really have to worry about, you know, funding issues because those are... A lot of fees are coming in, especially fees from sports sports activities, also funding from the Guam Football Federation, funding from the Guam Major League and other softball and baseball leagues around the island that utilize, you know, the facilities that is under Parks and Rec. So definitely, I do support this bill. Thank you.
Excellent, and Sutus Maasi for that testimony and support, of course. And I was pleased to hear in the previous hearing, when we were having a confirmation hearing for Mr. Steffi to be a Board Member for DPR, that he was reminding us of the days where they were able to generate revenues through billboards and other things. And he said that that could bring in about $60,000 a year. So, you know, we want to make sure that those burial fees, especially because that's probably the single largest fee that is available to DPR, that the burial fees are getting there. And in looking through the material, through the legislation, it was saying that there should be monthly financial reports that the department is doing. And, you know, it may have been quite some time since that has been done, but it's important to have some like that so that it can be verified against what the Recreation Fund is showing to make sure that inadvertently or otherwise it hasn't made it in there. Because if there's $5,000 a week being collected, that could be a huge help. And then if there are additional revenue ideas that are generated or brought back from the past, yeah, we want to give every penny that we can to DPR. We had planned to have a fairly sizable increase to help build it back up, but our COVID-19 and state of emergency and fiscal crisis nipped that in the bud so that we stayed pretty stable. So fortunately, we didn't lose too much, but we haven't been able to really build back to where we need to be. So with that, I know that the Minority Leader was very interested in making sure that this bill happened. She's been very supportive of this measure. Minority Leader, do you have any questions or comments you would like to make?
Yes, actually, I'm very interested in ensuring that Parks and Recs receive their funding, especially from this particular fund, the Public Recreation Service Fund. And I do support this legislation. However, I think, just for the record, it might be more appropriate to incorporate the same kind of language as the Limited Gaming Fund in Guam Code Annotated 115204D, where it states that the monies remaining in the fund after maintaining the status reserves of administrative expenses of this act are hereby appropriated and for the purpose of the repair and construction of sports facility. Now, the next section that says, I think, is something that might be incorporated in this, which means shall continue to be deemed appropriated annually in the following manner in each physical year. So that might be more conducive to this legislation as just a suggestion, something to look into to strengthen the bill and provide what it's intended to do. The second question I... Well, the second thing I'd like to bring up and is a question is, Director, the revenues in 2020, I believe that was appropriated from the Public Recreational Service Fund was $112,707 for FY 2020. How much of that was realized?
The $112,000 from the...
Public Recreation Service Fund?
No, funds. I'm not sure how much was in convert. I need to look at the total amount that was utilized.
Okay, yeah, if we can get those numbers...
I will get that to you. I will get that to you.
Yeah, it'll be important to get that number. And I can add a little bit of insight in there, Minority Leader. I think it was $112,000 that they were estimated, right, to be collecting? But because COVID hit, then parks were closed and the pavilion fees were not coming in. And even the burial fees at the beginning, for a good amount of time, were waived because we really didn't understand the number of deaths that we were going to be dealing with. And so the Governor in one of her executive orders... Oh, I think it was in an executive order, but she waived them. And so the last time I looked at it, I believe, when we were going through our budget process, it had realized $57,000 of the $112,000. But an update to that by the Director would be real important.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, Director, if I can get those numbers too as well. I appreciate it. In FY 2021, there was an estimated percentage project of $116,456 for FY 2021. And I think the realisticness of, you know, the reality of this financial situation, basically, I'm not quite sure if we're going to see that. But I know you guys are doing everything you can to, you know, tighten your belts and finding austerity measures. But, and this is going to be a very trying time, and I'm pretty sure you all know that. So just an FYI, you know, I wanted to bring it up about the funding part. And thank you, Madam Chair, for... I mean, that's substantially half of the amount that was appropriated in FY 2020. But I hope that somehow we can find a way to at least get a little bit closer to what was given in 2020 to FY 2021 and find some type of relief for Parks and Rec. You know, because right now with this, with COVID-19, a lot of the individual people are going out and utilizing the parks, the park areas. I mean, it's safer to be outdoors than it is inside, and people are taking advantage of that. You can see it all along Tuamun. People walking down in Assen, you know, going out. And then people are rediscovering the outdoors and nothing more than to go to places that are considered safe, our parks, you know, and where there's facilities that we can enjoy. and where there's facilities that we can enjoy and take our children to and our grandchildren to. So there is going to be an issue, you know, coming up with this particular Public Recreation Service Fund, a shortage. So let's find a way, you know. We got Bob Steffi. I call him the money man, so let's hopefully Bob will come and help provide some insight. Okay, so thank you again, thank you, Victor, and thank you, Mr. Alcantara, as well.
Yes, and those were, those were very good points. I, too, during the budget process, was very, very wary or skeptical about $116,000 when we hadn't been able to meet the $112,000. So I think these monthly reports are going to be important because if $5,000 a week, at least at this point, going in, then that helps us think that we might realize $116,000, if not more. And I do appreciate also the recommendation or suggestion for that language because we want this bill to be as strong as possible. We want to make sure that it can be used for capital improvement or other things like that. So we will definitely look at that limited gaming fund and the wording for that. So I appreciate that suggestion, yes, for the verbiage. And I do want to ask the director, this probably occurred to the minority leader as well. So we know that we're getting the burial fees in. Obviously, the pool fees are null and void right now. But are people coming in for pavilion fees? Has that been waived or is that sort of informally, like, what is the status of that?
The pavilion fees, some are coming in. But, you know, because of the five-person limit, maybe one or two a week come in for rental. And that's about it.
Madam Chair, if I may, since you brought that up, Roki, I know it's the five-capacity that's outside of the family dwelling. But I guess some of those who are renting could be families who are in the same, you know, dwelling, which is more individuals. Is that what you're starting to see? I mean, it...
Yeah, a lot of them are just family members. There's not... If, you know, different... Most of it is just family. And when they come in here to get a rental, we ask them what, you know, what the purpose is for being there. But it's mostly family that's going to be using it.
Do you ask them, Roki, if it's family within the same dwelling? If there's, I'm pretty sure you give them the executive orders, you know, mandates, right?
Yes, we do, we do. And we, you know, it's hardly, not a lot of them come in here for rental, not like four. I mean, maybe if they lift the requirements of over five, then we'll get a lot.
Yeah, and we're, hopefully, we're on that track, you know, staying underneath the car, you know, and we have two weeks to go on that. But thank you, Madam Chair, I was just thinking about that, meaning to know who exactly is renting those right now during a time... Okay, thank you.
And it's good to get assurance that the executive order, those mandates, you know, are being outlined or explained so that people understand when they're going out there. So good point.
Also, just to add to that, on the permit that's given to them when they pay all their fees and stuff, it's also noted on the permit, the executive order and stuff like that, it's all on the permit, so.
That's good.
Well, it's good to hear that those kind of details are in place. And that speaks to the shaping up, I think, of the department that people are working together and they're each making sure that these details are being taken care of. So Sutus Massey for that, Deputy Director, as well. So thank you to the Senator, the minority leader who provided comments and asked questions, and to those who testified. Your testimony and comments will be considered by the committee. If there aren't any other comments, I will now close on the bill. Bill 295 makes it clear that we, as a legislature, recognize the important work DPR must do in maintaining our parks and facilities, and that we, as a body, also recognize that every resource and every penny it has is critical in helping DPR meet its needs and mandates. Therefore, I ask my colleagues to support this bill. The bill leaves no room for interpretation or ambiguity. The money deposited fund by law from the limited revenue sources that the department has, which I mentioned before, should always and rightfully stay with the department. The bill, at the end of the day, provides DPR with this additional assurance. And I encourage the director, if he hasn't done so already, to implement that portion of the law that calls for the monthly reports. Because if there is something like 40 burials a month, that means that $20,000 a month should be showing up in the rent purchases funds. And that can then, I believe, be directly applied for equipment and other items. So we have now exhausted both items on the agenda. As a reminder, the committee will continue to receive any written comments on Bills 426 and 295. Please address your written testimony to the committee on, excuse me, on Heritage and the Arts Parks Guam Products have gotten a revitalization, self-determination, and regional affairs, and submit it via email to office@senatorkelly@guamlegislature.org or to my office located on the second floor of the Guam Congress Building. The committee now adjourns this public hearing. The time is now 7:13. Thank you again, everyone, and have a good evening to everyone.